Ready, Mr. Clem?
Ready.
Yes, sir.
We'll call the City Council for the meeting on Wednesday, March 19th, 2014, at 7:30 PM. Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Randkunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Krotowski, Mr. Mursky, Mr. Winarski. All please rise for a moment of silent meditation and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Mr. President, we ask this evening, as always, that we remember those that are less fortunate than we are in our community in any and every way, and remember those in our thoughts and prayers when we do have our moment of silent meditation that have lost loved ones since the last time we were in these chambers. And finally, we ask that our God and Creator to give us the wisdom and the proper information to make the best decisions for the citizens of the city of Erie.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Except the minutes of the meeting of March 5th and the bills for payment on March 21st and March 28th. Mr. Brennan, Mr. Randkunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Krotowski, Mr. Mursky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon. And I believe we have a presentation tonight. I'll turn it over to Mr. Witherspoon.
We have several presentations this evening. First, we would like to ask the Judge Carney to come up to the mic or come up on the stage, if you will.
Stand mike over there.
Good evening, distinguished members of council, and Jim Clem. God bless you on your years of service and your future retirement, members of the administration, and Madam Controller, and fellow citizens. This is a great opportunity because, you know, as a magistrate district judge, I deal with a lot of issues with animals, pets, even I live in the manor in the city of Erie, and I feed the feral cats, you know? Ever since the Humane Society went over to the Mill Creek place on Interchange Road, a lot of our citizens felt alienated as to the fact, what are we going to do with these pests? I mean, these animals are God's creatures. We love them just like we love our Lord. But someone has taken the ball, you know, and run with it for the last 10 years. And tonight, we're going to celebrate the anniversary of the Anna Shelter and the efforts of what they have done for the last 10 years. You know, you don't have to feel neglected or not considered because this is an unkill shelter. You know, it's exciting that we have this in our community, and a lot of people have taken rise as to the need for it, the growing problem, because it's not going to go away. It has to be controlled, but we have to have an avenue of some caring and compassionate people, and Ruth Thompson Carroll has brought that to the table, and so has Anna Shelter. So I know there's a lot of business at hand here tonight, so on behalf of the Special Court Judges Administration, we have a few things to award tonight. And this says here, "In appreciation to Ruth Thompson Carroll for her outstanding service and dedication to our community and its citizens of the city of Erie, Pennsylvania, and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania." And if Ruth, if you could come up here and accept this on behalf of yourself. And we're also going to have one for Anna Shelter as well.
Thank you so much. I honestly had no idea why you asked me to come here, so I wish I would have known because I literally, Chris and I literally came right from the shelter. I honestly thought it was going to be something about my dad. So thank you very much, Tom. And Chris is my partner at the shelter. We started it together, so certainly I wouldn't be here without her either. So thank you so much for honoring us in our shelter clothes. So thank you. Very nice. Okay.
And this one here says also, "On behalf of the Special Court Judges Administration," and signed by our President Judge Sue Mack, who was supposed to be here but had another commitment and couldn't make it tonight. "On behalf of the 41 judges in District 1 and the 555 magistrate district judges in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, we'd like to honor Anna Shelter for their 10 years of service to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and the city of Erie." Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Before she leaves, you know, you can't give, you know, a plumber a wrench. You know, the honoree always want to give him flowers, but this is rosebud here, you know? So if you could hold this one moment here.
I heard you.
This is two pounds of the ultimate assortments from Tony Stefanelle from Romolo's, and this is a check for Anna Shelter for $100 from my late brother-in-law Jimmy Lee Ota, who would have wanted this on her behalf. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Now, there's going to be some other acknowledgements on your behalf, but Ruth, don't go away. So just stand right over here, one second. Earlier in my courtroom this week, Rob Colbertson said, "I got subpoenaed. Am I in trouble?" I go, "What, are you kidding me? This guy is our only animal control officer in the city of Erie, and he donates his time to the Anna Shelter. He is one amazing human being." Get a round of applause for Rob Colbertson. Come on up here, Rob. And he asked me, "Should I wear my uniform?" Well, where the pit bulls bite them all the time? He's got big leather coats on. Today, he's in his own gear. But this also, "On behalf of Officer Rob Colbertson for outstanding service on behalf of the city of Erie, the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, we really appreciate your efforts." Thank you, Rob.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, very good. Then we have a couple more awards, and I will sit down and shut up. We have our council president here.
The most proper thing to say is, "Thank you, Your Honor." Again, the outstanding job that Ruth and Anna Shelter has done for the city is just outstanding, and I've known about her work for a long time through Mr. Thompson. And on behalf of City Council, we'd like to present you with this certificate identifying all the good work you have done. I know what you're going to continue to do. And also, we have another certificate for you for 10 years anniversary, your 10th anniversary. We thank you very much for that. And I'm still waiting for that little Itsu dog. I want a little Itsu. You know, you can see me walking the little Itsu. They'll talk about me, and I'll give something to talk about. But also, I'd like to say thank you to Bob for an outstanding job, single-handed. You got all the pooches in the city, all the four-legged animal running around. I don't know how you do it. I'm not going to try, but congratulations. We appreciate you very, very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Kaz Krotowski.
You're the luckiest man alive. As soon as I choke. But Ruth, on behalf of Representative Pat Harkins, who represents much of East Erie and parts of Erie County, he couldn't be here tonight, but on behalf of him and also the legislature of the Commonwealth of PA, he wants to present you with this.
That's so nice of you.
Yes, it's a tribute to your, all the things you've done with animals and also your educational programs. It's too lengthy to read, but in your time. So, thank you.
Well, thank you.
For all the things you've done.
Thanks, guys. Extremely unnecessary.
I will say the awareness is in their force, Ruth, and Chris, and Rob. On behalf of Mayor, City, and the administration, thank you so much for 10 years of service to the Erie community. The mayor wanted you to have this proclamation for 10 years of service to the Anna Shelter. Thank you very much.
Yeah, for sure. And this is just awkward for me because this obviously isn't why we do the Anna Shelter, so this is kind of foreign. But thank you guys so much. Thank you. Chris?
Thank you.
Rob, anybody? Thank you.
Are there any requests for repository sales? Are there any requests for repository sales? Here we none will move into citizens to be heard, and we had three individuals who called in or emailed. First, we'll have, I want to pronounce this correctly, Ms. Athena Bonfer, followed by Kevin Allen, followed by Mr. Randy Barnes.
Is she here? No? Okay. Kevin Allen?
[inaudible]
And Randy Barnes? Okay. Watching the basketball games.
Hey, citizens to be heard. Yep. Please come to the mic, give us your name and address, please.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
My name is McDonald. My property is 19th and Reed. I have a few issues here. I'm looking at this $350,000 unappropriated anticipated revenue. I don't, why can't you anticipate some money for those centers, those three black centers? Those centers haven't been worked on in over 20 years. That's a long time. You know, if you don't do nothing to your house in 20 years, it start falling down. You go around and look at those centers, they're falling down. I don't understand that. You're getting our tax money, but you're not doing nothing for us. You're busy trying to make a tourist town. Well, tourist town is all right, but you should do something about the foundation that's already here. You ain't got to make that. All you got to do is do some painting and some brickwork. Those centers are in dire need. They need some help. They need some work. No, no, no. I hope you don't wait till they start falling down. It don't make sense to me. I see that multicultural place over there, you want to get some money for them. Those centers were here before they came. Why can't you get some money for them? Those centers don't mean nothing to you. And those executive directors over there, I never see any of them down here talking to you about that. If they don't want to see those centers maintained, then they don't have no business over there. They drawing a pay, and that's all they want is their pay, look like to me. Our kids deserve better than that. Our kids deserve better than that. I want to get back to those cameras on those cruises. Have you all did anything about that yet? Have you even talked about it? It's important to get those cameras on those cruises. Those policemen, their mouths are not a prayer book or a Bible. Get those cameras on those cruises, so you'll know what's going on. You won't have to say, "Well, is he lying?" Hey, a picture is worth a thousand words. Y'all don't seem to agree with me, but you wish you had to put them on there sooner or later. I don't understand you. It's for everybody's benefit. When people come down, when the police come and get them, those cameras are on, you could turn that picture back on and see what went on. You won't have to be blind-eyed and taking his word because he's in that blue uniform. That don't mean nothing. Some of the apostles lied back in Jesus' day. You think they're better than Jesus? No, there's nothing walking down here better than Jesus. You better read your Bible. You took an oath. When you took that oath, you didn't take it to me, you took it to God. You was telling God, "I'm going to do the right thing." God got away with getting your attention. It might be through you, it might be through your family. Your family could be cursed. The Bible speaks of a curse. Read the Bible. You might do a better job. I'm not preaching to you. I'm just telling you, do the right thing. Y'all don't think them cameras should be on them cruises? Don't put them on there. But I tell you, the police, the state troopers got them on theirs. What's wrong, the city can't get them on theirs? Those out there cost money. You're spending money on them, on those cruises, police cruises. Y'all better, y'all better start thinking. Y'all better get together and talk this over, because it's the right thing to do. If I didn't think it was the right thing, I wouldn't be down here talking to you about it. Now, I want y'all to get on the stick. You should get them on, you should get those cameras on there before summer get here, because you don't know what kind of summer is coming up. Y'all have a good day. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of City Council. My name is Robert Ward. My wife and I are property owners in the city of Erie, and I've been following, keeping this strictly to the agenda. You have before you tonight an ordinance amendment to seek to add some bite to this whole garbage fee problem, limiting or restricting permits and licenses for landlords who are delinquent on their garbage bills. I'm also a practicing attorney here in Erie. I'm also the solicitor for Harbor Creek Township. I've been there since 1991. And when I first started following this controversy and saw the headline in the other day's paper, the lawyer in me kicked in, and I said, "I don't, I don't understand this." I looked at some of the quotes. I spent a day going through old newspapers, online, and so forth, to see how you got to this point, where in 2014, you've got $2.5 million worth of delinquent garbage bills. For a budget on an annual basis, it's 7.4 million. So a third of your budget is delinquent bills. Now, I know that's an accumulation, we're told, of over, some of these delinquencies being 10 years or more. I guess what's baffling to me as a taxpayer in the city and as a garbage fee payer, and we noted our name wasn't on the list when we went to the Go Erie link the first time it came up, and just checking it recently, but if the problem is, you've got an ordinance in place that says the owner is responsible for these fees, why is it necessary to explore so many other avenues? I know the mayor was quoted as saying, "Our hands are tied." I know in 2010, at least one of the members, the current panel, was quoted by the Times News as saying that it's an overwhelming problem and we're looking into it. In four years, I would have thought that more than just looking into it would have occurred. I also noticed there's a coincidence between an excess of $200,000 having been paid recently after the list was outed and the names of some of these delinquent payers were made public, and hopefully that'll continue to be a trend. But there's a pretty straightforward checklist of what to do here, and you've got competent members of your solicitor staff who have at least as much intelligence as me and as experienced in the municipal field. I mean, there are a battery of remedies available, and to say, "Your hands are tied," or "We've got to brainstorm about this," or "We don't know which way to turn," is baffling. In 2004, in Harbor Creek Township, we had $500,000 worth of water line liens for water lines that were installed, and the Board of Supervisors at that time said, "What do we do?" Well, we initiated suits. We filed suits. We turned the liens into money, and we never had to sell anybody's house because when push came to shove, the amount of penalties and interest that were accruing on these liens far outweighed whatever the current interest rate on past book savings was. And so most of the folks came to us and said, "Help us work this out." And we did. We collected 95% of that amount, helped to balance our budget, and we haven't raised taxes in 24 years. We just put up our latest banner out there this week. So I guess, from a citizen's standpoint as well as a solicitor's standpoint, I am absolutely baffled about what all the consternation and thought tanks that are generating here about what the action plan is. When you withhold these permits, or I think it was Kim Green that told me, "Maybe we're going to eliminate these folks from Section 8 eligibility if they don't pay up these garbage fees." I mean, those are collateral ways of attacking this, but the best way is to go for the pocketbook. Because all these folks, including the two largest offenders, Ray Mac and Govno, 56-plus, $56,000-plus outstanding for more, in many instances, for more than 10 years. And when they're quoted in the newspaper as saying, "It's gotten so out of hand, we just don't know what to do. It doesn't pay to be a landlord." Then don't be a landlord. I know Greg Carley was quoted in the paper the other day as saying, "But this might result in some evictions if we withhold permits and licenses." Okay, well, maybe those are the kind of landlords you don't want in the city then, if they're not going to be responsible enough. And then the mayor says, "Well, we, our hands are tied. We can't let garbage accumulate." Sure, you can't, because you've got four ordinances that I'm aware of that would enable you to prosecute the owner if it did. You've got your property maintenance code. You have a standalone ordinance that covers that. You've got the uniform construction code, all of which have provisions, and you've got a nuisance ordinance, all of which define nuisance as garbage collecting in front of your house. So if I'm a landlord in this city, which I'm not, but if I were, and I knew that the stuff was accumulating on my walk in front because I didn't pay my garbage bill, and in Mill Creek and Harbor Creek, when the garbage bill doesn't get paid, Waste Management just doesn't pick it up, but our code enforcement people go out and issue citations. So there's got to be some more bite to this, or bite to the bark. Add an attorney's fee provision. I mean, when they have to pay money, they'll turn around and they'll turn this over. Thank you.
My name is Willie McAdory. I stay at 448 East 15th Street. What I'd like to talk about today is Mrs. Jones' proposal for these kids going to work this summer. What is up with that? It's March, and June will be here in a minute. I ain't heard nothing else about nobody talking about doing anything for these kids for the summer. Now, you know, we ain't too displeased what it took us 13 years to get a police officer. Took us 13 years, and we was talking this 13 years ago, and it just happened. But I understand, it's just like the man don't never want us telling him what to do. He do it on his own time when he get ready. The fireman, the one that y'all lied to us for eight months about, we ain't seen her yet. Do we have a black fire person? You know, council said we got one. We still ain't seen her. I really don't want to meet her myself personally, okay? But I'm saying, as peoples in the community, just keep asking this question all the time, "Where is she at? How come nobody see her?" You know, Jessica, just like we said about the fireman, it's important that we know who she is, what she look like. Just like the mayor showed us the police officer they just hired, cool. All they do is take a picture and put it in the newspaper? Now, y'all lied to us, y'all said, y'all lied to us when y'all said y'all didn't know they had hired one or nothing. Now, my question is, I'm going to ask y'all again, do we have a black fire person? We don't want you to give, you know, no special treatment for her. A op would be real nice. You know, we could get a, you know, just on a TV camera somewhere, or her even just going in the station, whatever. People just want to see her. And I, you know, that's not that much to ask, and it ain't going to cost you nothing. But the people in the community would like to see her if we have one. You know, y'all lie so much down here, we don't know what to believe. And if we could just see her, that shouldn't be that difficult. But back to these jobs. We need some job for our young peoples in the community. You know, you're writing up all these articles, you know, that black peoples are not cooperating with the police. They are not doing what they're supposed to do as citizens. But can y'all ask yourselves a question? Do you blame them for doing what they doing? You know, you know, the police to serve and protect, that's not the case with black folks in the community. But you know, it's amazing to us is that when black peoples go into the courthouse to testify in reference to another black person, ain't nobody white in that building over there would believe them, would not believe them. But now, if you, if y'all get one of our brothers or sisters dying there, and they done committed a crime, and the black folks know it, y'all want to call them in, and for them to testify on them, do that make sense? I mean, really, ask yourself the question, "Do it make sense?" One hand, you won't believe black folks, but when it's against one of us, and we're to testify against them, you want us to come down there and do all that whole harley, and you'll believe us there?
Time's up, Mr. McAdory.
Thank you very much, Mr. Witherspoon.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. President and members of City Council. My name is Father Jerry Priscaro, 921 East Avenue. L.R. Kimball &amp; Associates Federal Transportation Study and Preferred Alternative Recommendation contains numerous critical and substantial errors, errors of commission and errors of omission. They include, but are not limited to, 1) faulty methodology employed in arriving at a preferred alternative; 2) false and inaccurate information regarding actual ground distance measurements on a multitude of levels; 3) the methods used to record public comments at CAC meetings were grossly deficient; they were not recorded verbatim; 4) failure to adequately answer comments and questions with sound and reasonable answers most of the time; 5) a lack of public outreach on the part of all the parties; and no time was bulk mail utilized to reach as many people as possible; and no time were a variety of methods of communication employed; 6) while a computer website with posted information serves city resident populations mostly under the age of 50, those ages 50 and above could not access it, since many are computer illiterate, while others don't own a computer at all; 7) documents were never on display or made available for inspection at public locations throughout the city in hard copy form. In turn, the public did not have adequate time to comment. You cannot comment on what you cannot see. There was a lack of environmental justice outreach, and a multitude of erroneous conclusions arrived at in that area; 9) the process of selecting CAC committee members was skewed at best and very deficient at least, since it did not include a wide variety of community and neighborhood leaders specifically geographically located in our area; 11) a private meeting of government officials and public safety officials that the general public was not invited to, and which citizen advisory committee members were solicited, was, in a sense, a violation of the Sunshine Act; 12) erroneous financial figures, including general cost comparisons, with no detailed factual data to support those figures, and discriminatory comparisons; 13) a lack of transparency throughout the entire transportation study process; 14) a lack of utilization and lack of employment of a variety of communicational techniques on a variety of levels beyond a computer website; 15) lack of outreach to the business community; 16) a citizen advisory committee overloaded with government officials while lacking in extensive representation of homeowners, residents, business owners, nonprofit agencies, schools, and churches; 17) virtually a total exclusion of any representation or involvement of persons with disabilities or nonprofit agencies in immediate area who work with persons with disabilities; 18) a lack 18. A lack of due diligence in following the prescribed schedule for the transportation study as outlined by L.R. Kimball Engineering, which was supposed to include a meeting sometime in the winter of 2013, 2014; 19. A lack of transparency as to why L.R. Kimball Engineering was chosen, why other firms weren't chosen. Disqualifying factors. Number 20. The existence of a definite conflict of interest with objectivity in conducting the study and the selection of a preferred alternative given by L.R. Kimball that has multiple and historical business dealings with PennDOT across the state of Pennsylvania on a regular basis; 21. Total disregard for the majority opinion of the public's input at CAC and public meetings; 22. The location venue selected for public meetings was confined to one neighborhood location, one location far removed from the neighborhood at the Erie County Public Library along the Bayfront; 23. A lack of advertising and methods of communication, publicly advertising transportation to the Erie County Public Library; 24. A lack of transportation and availability of transportation to and from that meeting; 25. A lack of document availability to the general public; 26. A very narrowly defined, very limited transportation study area north of the railroad tracks with too much expansive area defined in the study south of the railroad tracks; 27. The preferred alternative supports elimination of the existing bridge that's been there for seventy-two years with two bridges at that location contradicting Federal Highway Administration and PennDOT transportation precedent of maintaining existing infrastructure rather than building a new infrastructure where it's never existed before; 28. L.R. Kimball Engineering firms' general cost estimates do not contain several independent estimates by other independent engineering firms that represent the range of lower and higher cost estimates usually associated with transportation projects and alternatives; 29. While L.R. Kimball Engineering applied a hundred-year cost projected estimate to a new bridge, it did not do so for a new Buffalo Road interchange and new on-ramp, and what it would cost over a hundred years. So there's financial discrepancies, and discriminatory methods were employed. Thank you.
Thank you, Father. Are there any other citizens to be heard?
Good evening, council. Jim McGoy, 7 West Forty-first Street, Erie. For years, I've been coming down here and talking with you folks about an ongoing problem that so far you have chose not to address: property reassessment. For the year 2013, combined sales in the city of Erie, all-inclusive residential, commercial, industrial, vacant land and investment, totaled approximately eight-hundred-and-ninety parcels. Of that, I took a sample of four-hundred-and-three. These properties sold under-assessed by fifty-nine million, four-hundred-and-thirty-thousand, nine-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars. This year alone, in the month of January, six properties sold under-assessed by two-hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand, eight-hundred-and-seventy dollars. Same month, six properties sold over-assessed for a hundred-and-seventy-four-thousand, nine-hundred. Guaranteed, the owners of the over-assessed properties will more than likely appeal for a reduction. The under-assessed will likely go on as usual unless you folks sit down as a team and address the issue. The school district in the past has challenged some assessments, but only if they are gonna lose three-thousand dollars in tax money. Last year, I think there was under twenty properties that they chose to appeal. The last two reassessments took about five years of fieldwork before their implementation. The longer you wait, the costlier it gets. That five-hundred-and, five, excuse me, fifty-nine million, four-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars in five years becomes two-hundred-and-ninety-seven million, one-hundred-and-fifty-four-thousand dollars without adding any more years to it. Folks, we have a problem. We're losing a lot of tax dollars. Let's address it. Let's work as a team. The county spent approximately seven-and-a-half million dollars on those last two reassessments. This is an ongoing problem, not just citywide, but countywide, and all taxing bodies are involved. So let's put a team together and address this problem for everybody. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Are there any other citizens to be heard? Are there any other citizens to be heard? Are there any other citizens to be heard? Hearing none. Mr. Clem?
Any ordinances for first reading? Council file ordinance fifteen thousand, eight sixty-nine. An ordinance appropriating the sum of three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars from unappropriated anticipated revenue to be received from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development for the Snoop's Neighborhood Elm Street Program. Motion of Mr. Jones, seconded by Mr. Krotowski, the council file ordinance number fifteen thousand, eight sixty-nine. Haven't been read, it's hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Rancutso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Krotowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon. Council file ordinance fifteen thousand, eight seventy. An ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the city of Erie, Part III Business Regulation Taxation Code Title I, Article 330 Landlord and Rental, Subsection 330.03B2, registration required for rental units, and Subsection 330.04A licensing required for rental units by amending Section 330.03B2 and adding a new Section 330.04A9 to condition the issuance of a residential rental unit and residential rental license on the requirement that all delinquent residential refuse fees associated with each unit be paid and accounts kept up to date. Motion of Mr. Mersky, seconded by Mr. Krotowski.
Mr. President? Yes. Just to speak on this motion before you, it's a first reading, but I just wanted to explain why I put it on the agenda. To me, it's common sense. Why would we give somebody the, license them to make money when they owe the city money? And I just feel that it is one more cog in the wheel, or one more step that we take in a multitude of steps to address the issue and to, when over fifty percent of the owed money is from landlords, we have to address that in a meaningful way, and so that's why I put this on the agenda.
Mr. Krotowski?
Go ahead. Are you okay? Okay, Jim?
Yep.
Yes, I'm proud to second this motion, because like Councilman Mersky, we have both seen the problems associated with landlords that don't live up to their responsibilities. And this is not the only thing we're doing. There seems to be a misconception in the community that this is the only thing we're doing. It's not. This is the first step, the first tool. We planned many other things, which we're looking at, which will be, which will come out in the near future. We have to answer to the good people out there, the everyday person that pays their garbage fee, their taxes, without any remorse, without any negative comments to us, even though it's a hardship for them. When we have people that are sitting out there owing us twenty thousand dollars, and ten thousand, and this has gone on for years, I can't speak about other councils, but I'm proud that this council has finally taken the bull by the horns. It's time that we represent the people who elected us, who live in this community, not the landlords that live out of town, or landlords that live in town, that are possibly collecting the money and not giving, remitting it back to us. We don't know that. But I remember when I rented, I paid two bills on my own. That was electric and gas, and the rest was told to me by the landlord what my rent would be. So I've heard all the excuses on TV. It comes down to personal responsibility. The property is in their name, and it's their responsibility to pay the bills. They're not doing it, and we have to add tools to our arsenal so that we can get the enforcement necessary. And make no bones about it, I'm gonna hold the administration and the people involved that, once we pass these ordinances, I expect them to enforce them. It's what the public expects, and they expect no less from us.
Thank you, Councilman Winarsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, another reason I too support this ordinance, because we have, we have to start somewhere with this issue that's on our forefront here. We have to take some type of precedence here, and are all the landlords at fault here? No. But we gotta start somewhere. When fifty percent of the landlords are not paying their fees, it isn't fair to the ones that are. At a later date, if something to this ordinance needs to be adjusted or changed, we have the right to do that, or the power to do that. But we have to get something in the books, something started here today, now, to let the citizens know this is our major concern at this point. Roughly twenty-nine-hundred properties are delinquent as of today. Of those, six-hundred-and-thirty-two have more than one unit that is a rental unit on it. So twenty-two percent. So people gotta understand, too, don't let the media or the perception out there be, it's all rental properties are a problem. Yes, there's some dollars out there, maybe the bigger dollars, but it's still not just the rental units, it's other single-family units too. And in those, it could also still be homeowners themselves, as well as landlords who are renting out just a one-unit property. People gotta realize, drive through the city of Erie, we consist of a heck of a lot of rental units. This city could not survive without these rental units. They are viable. They give an option. You have people coming in, buying them, and fixing them up, giving affordable housing to people who cannot afford to own a home. So we gotta get the perception out there that all landlords are the problem in this garbage delinquency, because they are not. On the average, ninety percent of our garbage fees are paid. So ninety, nine out of ten, or ninety percent of the fees are being paid at this time. Since the last time we met, to date, we have two-hundred-and-seventy-two, six-oh-three, and past garbage bills have been collected. So since this has come to the forefront, it has brought in some people to their senses to do their due diligence and pay the bill. Once again, tonight is just a start, like we've started the last months here, to try to come up with some solution. We are not finished yet. Like I said, this is just the start. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Clem?
Roll call, Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Rancutso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Krotowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon. Council file ordinance fifteen thousand, eight seventy-one. An ordinance appropriating the sum of a hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand dollars from the city of Erie Capital, Erie Capital Fund Unrestricted Fund Balance. This amount represents contributions from Gannon University, one-hundred-thousand dollars, and the Erie Indemnity Company, sixty-five-thousand dollars for the purchase of capital assets in the Bureau of Police. Motion, Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mr. Rancutso, the council file ordinance number fifteen thousand, eight seventy-one. Haven't been read, it's hereby adopted on first reading of City Council. Mr. Brennan, Mr. Rancutso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Krotowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon.
Mr. President?
Yes?
I'd like to make a motion to move the balance of the agenda.
I'll second it. It's been moving property second. Mr. Clem?
Any exceptions? Hearing none. We'll take the roll call on the balance of the agenda. Mr. Brennan, Mr. Rancutso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Krotowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon. That takes us to committee reports. Mr. President?
Councilwoman?
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple of things to report. I attended the Redevelopment Authority Monthly Board Meeting, and at the meeting, there's a lot of concern, I think, coming out of the Redevelopment Authority with the funding cuts that they're gonna be facing in the new year. They had just been, the day before the board meeting, had been to the Community Development Block Grant Public Hearing, in which the Department of Economic Development here in the city proposes what they might, you know, what they have been anticipating being awarded for the new year in community development block grant monies, and how that money will be spent. That money is, the amount is determined by the federal government, and of course, we are going to experience another cut again this year in the community development block grant monies. Those monies are typically used in the inner-city, in low-to-moderate-income areas, and they're designed to help to remove blight and to help with programs for low-to-moderate-income families and things like that. And the Redevelopment Authority particularly is concerned about programs that they have to try to help folks with rehabs in their homes, and the funding that is typically comes to them for rehabilitation and also demolition and things like that of blighted properties has been cut and will be cut in the coming block grant year. So they just express a lot of concern about trying to handle those funding restrictions and still be able to provide the needed services to the folks that live in our city, and make sure that we remove blight and have a service to help rehabilitate properties for those in need. So I know they're continuing to look into different programs that they can also operate, the lead abatement programs, and there are grants associated with that in order to try to keep removing lead from homes, because lead is poisonous, particularly to children, and they wanna make sure they remediate as many homes as possible through that lead-based abatement program. But they also were talking about continuing on a land banking, land bank planning group to try to look for, creating a land bank that would help to put together some disposition for properties throughout the county. So they are continuing to look onto that. But I think we, council usually gets the draft plan for the community development block grant year, usually towards the beginning of the summer, that is, does have to be adopted by council on the first of July. So I think we'll have a lot to look at. The cut is something like four-hundred-thousand-dollar cut, and that is across the whole community development block grant spectrum. So it's gonna be certainly hard to find the money to help support the agencies that we like to support with those funds. So that was really the most important thing that came out of the Redevelopment Authority's meeting. And the other thing that we have on the agenda is the Water Reserve Capital Fund Transfer. This is the money that we try to put aside each year, the, from the sale of the Water Authority to the Water Works many years ago, and the City Council is the overseer of those funds. We've invested those funds quite wisely, utilizing the fund advisor, and through the piggybacking with the aggregate pension, fund managers in order to try to get the most return on our investment. And the four percent of those funds every year come back into the city for capital improvement projects. So you see that transfer, that is money that we've raised and earned on interest and on investments to use for those capital needs of the city. So we do meet every quarter and review those quite closely and look for opportunities for us, and so we are glad to be able to do that. And that number has gone up each year, so we're very pleased about that. And that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Krotowski?
I have a very light report. I'll have a heavier one next month. I met with the Erie Parking Authority. Things are progressing well there financially. They're doing a great job. They brought to light that, I'll have some information next meeting, about when they'll be closing the Hammont parking ramp down for construction. They have it well under control, how they're gonna handle it, and there should be no negative input to the public or to the employees. And I'd like to thank my fellow members of council today for taking the first step in the process of solving the delinquencies. I'm proud of this council. I think they've done more than many councils many years ago did, and failed to tackle this. And it takes a lot of courage up here sometimes to do that, and I thank them. And Jessica, I'd like to thank you for-
No particular report in relation to committee liaison assignments, except Councilwoman Rancutso did mention the CDBG funds. One of my liaison positions is to the economic development department in the city, and again, there were cuts to that fund, which means cuts to regrettably the most, I hate the word needy, but the most needy portions in low-to-moderate income families and individuals in our community. It's amazing how when programs are cut, they cut the programs that help the most people, which is a really, really challenging thing to deal with in this part of, you know, our assignments and being in politics or in government, more so than in politics. But I do have a copy of that budget, have been looking over it and actually looking at some of the applications of some of the nonprofits that applied, and I don't know if there's any room or wiggle room for adjustment. I mean, that is their recommendation to us. We as council still have, if we have legitimate rationale and some ways to look and make other recommendations for some adjustments to that budget, we may be able to do that. But we'll never be able to meet all the needs financially of every organization that serves the most needy and most vulnerable in our community. So that just lends us to try to figure out ways to, as individuals and as for-profit and other organizations and groups, to be able to support those who are really where the rubber meets the road organizations to help our community. And it's, again, it's very challenging. I will report more on that at our next meeting. I did want to also add, I guess I do have a little bit of a report. Someone, a citizen, mentioned about summer jobs for young people, and we did do the support of this council and many other people, prototyped a pilot program, and we were able to put twelve young people to work last summer for about six to eight weeks, and that was, you know, a relatively successful pilot venture. And in doing that, realized that it is a much larger monster to tackle than just jobs. It's really about training and developing young people, more than just giving them a job for six to eight weeks, which helps, don't get me wrong. So what's happening now is we're kind of shifting the effort, and we have formed, I've worked with some folks in the community, we formed a committee, a rather diverse committee. Ironically, the individual who brought it up, I asked him to serve on the committee, so I don't know why they acted as if they didn't know what was going on, just to be perfectly honest. But with that said, there are meetings going on, and we're trying to figure out how do we, again, train people but at the same time give them a job, you know, and help them get money in their pocket. And so if we give them a fish, you know, the proverbial give them a fish they'll eat today, teach them how to fish, they'll be able to feed themselves for a much longer time period. And so what we're trying to do is that we're, again, we're going to give jobs and work to provide some working and job experience for young people, but it's going to be a lot more around training, life skills training, how do you do an interview? How do you articulate and represent and present yourself appropriately in a professional setting? How do you come in with the right garments for an interview? Those types of things that will last a lot longer than a hundred-and-fifty dollars a week we could get a child for eight weeks of a summer. And so any individual, organization, business that is interested in being a part of that, please feel free to call the clerk's office here in the city, reach out to me via email or whatever, and just let me know what you can add to that, to the pot, so to speak, because that's really where it's going to come from. It can't come from government, because as we hear, government money is always getting cut. But what we can do is maybe go to McDonald's one less time a week, and that adds up real fast. One, you know, you know, one less outing of whatever type, and invest that in our community, it'd be money well spent, well invested. So that project is happening, it's expanding, and we will see some great, I believe, some great growth in that. But there are other organizations and groups that are doing that. On March twenty-ninth, at the Booker T. Washington Center, there's a youth job fair that's going on there as well. So just check out your Facebook, check out the website, the city website, there's always things that are going on. If you have any questions about that, call the clerk's office, they'll get to us. But it really comes down to each of us as community members doing what we can do and not relying on others to do for us what we can do for ourselves, or rely, or watch for someone else to do for someone else, what we may be able to add to the pot as well. So I challenge all of us to do better. Each one teach one, each one reach one, and the community will be a better place. And again, I'll have more specific committee reports on the CDBG fund project and airport as well as the Water Authority next meeting. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilman Jones? Councilman Mersky?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few things to report. St. Patrick's Day went very well. There were little problems given the amount of people that were out over the three-day weekend, holiday weekend celebration, and thank you to the Erie Police Department for their fine job, and thanks for the citizens for being responsible, those who were responsible and kept things under control. Last week was National Sisters Week, and I just wanted to give a special thanks to all the religious sisters in the Erie area, the Sisters of Mercy, Sisters of St. Joseph, and the Benedictine Sisters. Without their efforts, Erie would be a much different place, and I would say a much bleaker place. So the work that they've done and continue to do, we honor, we cherish, and it makes Erie a better place. So thank you to all the sisters, and the religious sisters from other congregations that are not based in Erie. Thank you for your contributions to the Erie community. I attended the Snoop's Neighborhood Watch meeting, and I met with the people down there. They're concerned about, one of the things that happens during their large item pickup, and I'll address this with the administration, is people unload their whole house and all at one time. The large item pickup is for one large item per week, not, you know, it's not a dumpster for everybody. So that was one of their issues. And then I didn't get a chance to go to the Burton Deal Neighborhood Watch meeting, but we continue to work on the McClellan Park project and with the steering committee looking at fundraising opportunities there. Regarding the large item pickup that begins the first week of April, I believe it's April second, and, pardon me, April sixth, I'm sorry. So that's coming up, so get your stuff ready. I know that I have a couple of things ready to throw out. Erie Police, written examinations, applications can be picked up starting March thirty-first in room three hundred of the Erie City Hall, and those will be accepted until April fifteenth. So anyone interested in becoming an Erie police officer, written examination applications, March thirty-first is the first day to pick those up in room three hundred. And finally, I have Streets Department, if you have potholes, you can give the Streets Department a call, eight-seven-zero-one-three-four-zero. Eight-seven-zero-one-three-four-zero to report your potholes. As the weather is good enough to patch those potholes, they are out in force doing so. Just be aware that there are many, many, many potholes in the city of Erie due to the frigid temperatures that we had this year, and so if they don't get to it immediately, it is on the list and they will get to it. But please make sure you call those in. A lot of times, someone thinks someone else is going to do it, and call them in, and that way we make sure they're on the list. That's all I have to report today, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brennan?
Thank you, Mr. President. New liaison reports today. I do have a Port Authority meeting next week's Tuesday and an Erie Zoom meeting on Monday, so I'll have a, next meeting I'll have a report on those. I did attend an event, the Destination Erie had a meeting this past Wednesday. There's a transportation infrastructure meeting, which I've been attending. The new, there's a new project manager that was, her attorney's name is Anna Franz, she's going to be, she's taking over the project and helping out. And there's also a new project consultant. It's a Buffalo planning firm, and their name is Peter J. Smith. At the meeting, we reviewed some of the data collected from the earlier two phases of the study, but just going back to the beginning, the main goal of the study is to produce a comprehensive plan for Erie County, a plan for the future of our community. The plan's supposed to be complete by January two thousand and fifteen. It will be complete by that time, so I know a lot of people are working hard to try to make sure that the plan is completed and well worthwhile. Just one upcoming event that's coming up, it's not until May first, but I just wanted to tell people a little about it. Preservation Erie is holding an event called the Great Erie Awards. There's three businesses that are going to be honored for their long-term commitment to the Erie area. Downtown YMCA is one, Kraus Department Store, and the Remnant Store. There is going to be a speaker at the event, Mr. Ed McMahon. He's going to, he's a senior fellow at the Urban Land Institute. He's going to be talking about land conservation, smart growth, and historic preservation. The event is on May first at the Masonic Temple Ballroom, and there is a fee for the event, but I really just brought it up because I wanted to let everybody know about the awardees because they're well worth the award and their commitment to our region. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Winarski?
Thank you, Mr. President. Case anybody doesn't realize, the Elite Eight Women's Division Two Basketball Tournament is coming here to Erie, Pennsylvania this coming week. As Mr. Clem informed me, this is a national Elite Eight, so this is the only Elite Eight in northeast, southwest, any of that. It's, all the teams are coming here to Erie that made it to the Elite Eight, one of our local teams naturally being Edinburgh University, which congratulations to them. But it's going to be next Tuesday and Wednesday, with the finals being on Friday at the Erie Insurance Arena. So please, come out and support, promote Erie, Pennsylvania, show them we do have things to offer here. Make us proud. The only other thing I'd like to wish luck, since we're on sports, to our Erie Otters who had a fantastic regular season, record attendance, with the new arena helping that, it probably did not hurt, but playoffs start this weekend, Friday and Saturday, and hopefully a lot more games to follow, but please support our local Erie Otters also. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Clem?
Oh, that's it, Mr. President. Controller?
Oh, me? No. I'm sorry.
No, let's go.
Controller. Ready to go.
My wife's at the beauty shop, I got to pick her up.
I just have a couple of things. My office has completed the state audit that was required for the pension plans. It was due the thirty-first, so that's off and gone to them. And our consultant from DAHAB is in to discuss some of the performance of our managers. We have a meeting tomorrow at three o'clock, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Administration?
Very briefly, I don't want Mr. Clem to be late. Following up with Mr. Mersky, pothole hotline is up and running, please, as Bob said, just because it's there and two thousand cars go over a pothole every day doesn't mean that anybody has taken the time to actually call it in. So if, we'd rather have a hundred calls on the same pothole than not anybody letting us know that it does need to be addressed. And they're out there with cold patch, working to the best of their ability, so we want to get everything taken care of for the citizens who use, of course, our public streets. Just to follow up again from Mr. Winarski, that the Elite Eight is in fact in town, and we're very happy to welcome all of these people to our city, get out and support these student athletes who have worked so hard to get to this point in their career. One last thing, summer will be here eventually. Working on the Sounds of Summer concert series, once again, we will be taking music to a number of retirement and apartment complexes, Soldiers' and Sailors' Home, St. Mary's, Hands, some of their facilities, St. Joseph Apartments and such. So we are working with the musicians to get those concerts on the schedule. They'll be Monday evenings at seven o'clock, just as they have been in the past. And I'd like to thank the Erie banking community for once again sponsoring the Sounds of Summer for our residents. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. And now, Mr. Clem?
Okay, city council now adjourned at eight-thirty-five P.M. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Rancutso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Krotowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski.